Well, let's start with tonight's budget workshop. It's 6:00 PM on March 31st and we will begin with eleven minutes.
Let's go to the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have all cast one for this session. We still have it. He should be there momentarily. We'll begin with item 51, discussion of the proposed fiscal 26 budget. We'll be starting off with winter public schools and I will turn it over to Tom Oliver White.
I just want to say thank you to school administrators, to our tenant and our students, their town hall meeting, I'll be able to attend and it's been extremely enlightening and extremely helpful in understanding what they are trying to achieve. Just to summarize, I'm going to also fire that presentation also. You know, I think they're looking at a nine percent increase, which, you know, initially I was very hesitant. But after talking with these individuals and the superintendent, it's become finally clear that this is a necessary move in order to stabilize the financial impacts from our previous budget debt balance. And so I just want to say that, you know, I appreciate the superintendent, you know, this call when she presented her take on the budget and her introduction into the town. I've asked that they include us in the town or transfer our process, which I think they have delivered.
So we have Dr. Paulie and Megan White and members of the school board here and then so we have a presentation. Thank you.
Yes, microphone.
Just have to yell.
And I can do that. I can use my speakerboard and say, oh, I think Anthony tried on this. Thank you for this opportunity and on behalf of our administrative team and the school board, I'm happy to present an overview of the board adopted of what you've been saying, but that represents our team's best thinking on how to move teaching and learning forward. Education is worth the investment. Lack of a high school diploma is the single greatest risk factor for homelessness as a young adult. Those without a diploma have the single highest unemployment. Seventy-five percent of inmates and state grifters are high school graduates. And without a high school diploma, you have less earning power throughout your lifetime. It's important as a community that we invest in education for children. The FY26 budget focuses on all three areas of the board adopted strategic plan. More specifically, we are establishing a baseline budget with accurate numbers in all cost centers. The budget we are living with today is based upon artificial numbers. Additionally, we have safety needs that have to be addressed and we need to work on academic achievement, including our graduation route. This board adopted budget is a 10.72% increase. Five point seven five percent of this increase is to get us out of the financial shortfall we are in this current year. The remaining 4.97% is the increase to move education forward next year. First and foremost, we must establish an accurate baseline budget. This is not a common practice in districts across the state. You are usually building a budget from an existing healthy accurate budget. This current year's budget has a shortfall of $778,327, which reflects 5.75% of the total 10.72% increase that we are requesting, just to get us out of the hole. This budget does not address all the needs we have. Even if we kept the same staff and gave no one raises with no additional increases to insurance or other cost centers, we would require this 5.75% increase. Part of this comes from being under budgeted and medical insurance this current year by 155,000. Property insurance was under budgeted by 24,000. Salary lines were underfunded, including our sublines being short by 97,000. Electricity costs were underfunded by at least 53,000, partially due to an increase in delivery fees. The numbers in this year's budget are artificial, which requires now the 5.75% increase of the overall 10.72 to get us into a level line build. This next slide shows that we require an additional $433,739 or a 4.97% increase for next year's due to contractual obligations and for a significant estimated increase in health insurance of 139,421. This also, this number also includes the halftime ed tech we need and pre-cat because of our partnership ending with SK CDC, which we have absolutely no control over. This is due to us not meeting the criteria, criteria to continue to partner with them. I spoke to you clear about how our phone system has reached its end of life and we can no longer get cards or add additional needed lines. Property insurance is increasing 59,000 and our contracted cleaning services are increasing by 18,000. So that summarizes the next 4.97% of the increase, leaving us with 1.77% or the 239,871 that we're requesting. This budget begins to establish some good fiscal habits. It provides an annual donation to the established term account so that in 10 years, when the term needs to be replaced, there is money there to do so. In future years, we will need to give much more than 5,000, but this is a starting point. This budget also establishes a hundred thousand dollar maintenance fund for maintenance and capital improvements. We hope to build this fund up to 200,000 in the future. In your packet provided this evening is the long-term plan for the next circle of year for the projects if you see the need to be completed to maintain buildings. You can see that these are not extravagant and that they tow over $3 million. This hundred thousand is just a minimal starting point that really cannot be postponed. Establishing these sound fiscal habits costs 105,000 or 0.78% of the 10.72% increase. This leaves only 0.99% or 134,000 of the 10.72 increase to invest in moving for student achievement forward. In order to invest in our students, we must begin to have a targeted focus on improved student achievement. As I shared at our previous meeting around our reading, math and graduation rate, which you last. We want to reverse the trend you're seeing. This requires investing in two halftime interventionists at the middle and high school at a cost of 91,000 or 0.68% of the total 10.72% increase. And when you deduct that, we have $43,000 or 0.332% in remaining money for additional equipment and supplies and votes that we feel are needed. When I presented to you in the, when that was, but a while ago, a couple of months ago, there was a request for per pupil spending. I need two comparisons. Both of these slides are in your packets as handouts. When negotiating contracts, we compare ourselves to our neighboring districts. In per pupil spending with our school board, we come in last. Next, we receive data from MSMA that allowed us to look at districts throughout the state that are near our size. Of those eight districts, we are next to last in per pupil spending. I also have a handout this evening due to a request by one of the town council salary consultant. This data was gathered by the MEA on reporting this. Only in transportation are we competitive. Our most veteran teachers are in the bottom 12% of teachers paid throughout the state. Here is a line graph depicting percent increase and decrease of the school budget over the last several years. FY to FY17 to FY25, it has ranged from a negative, negative 3.05% to a 5.51, averaging out to a modest 2.47% yearly increase in expenditures over the past several years. On this slide, I have added a red line to show that the consumer price index or inflation for the same period as the budget changes. There were years that we were not even close to keeping up with inflation, especially the year that we had the negative increase. If you add up all of the differences between our budget change and inflation, it comes out at the negative 9.24%. Or another way to say it is that we are 9.24% behind the inflation rate. Our budget has not kept up with inflation FY17 to FY24. Where we could reduce, we have reduced. We are eliminating one and a half teachers at the middle school, a halftime special ed teacher, one bus driver, a reduction in hours to our year-round bus drivers, and we reduced the hours to our local bus driver. Last year, the technology director is cut. A few years ago, a fourth grade teacher was cut. As our enrollment has declined, we have cut positions. There are three areas where we had to estimate. We are currently negotiating the transportation and support staff contracts. Our medical insurance is also an estimation based upon what MSMA has provided us. We just heard last week that we should know by April 11th about the medical issue. So that should be. We believe this budget strengthens and moves winter public schools forward, breaking barriers and providing opportunities for all of our students to succeed. And I know that this budget is higher than any of us want. I've never requested a budget of this increase, but I've also never inherited the budget that I inherited this year. And this is what is needed to ensure that we establish fiscal sound principles. It also positions us for success for increasing student achievement. Some of our recent graduates have attended UMaine, CMCC, Bates, Stanford, Princeton and Harvard. We hope that you can support this budget and the students of one of our public schools.
Thank you for the time, Dr. Paulie. And thank you very much to you and your staff for gathering all this information for us. We've been hearing a lot of questions, so I have to look forward to. Is there any comments from council?
I have a comment. That's all the work. I appreciate you having the feelings. I don't hear any vote for them to be giving a real number either. Is that one of the reasons why they didn't vote for it, supporting them, because I think even they have a real number to them. And it turned out, hate to be right, but we were sure. So a struggle with the increase, not saying there's not need. The problem is, is trying to make up the shortfall from last year in one year is a big ask for the whole town. Plus, the increase on top of that. So I'm just saying, so you don't need to talk about it, but I'm going to say it because it's a strict, practical thing. If you were sure at your own home budget, you couldn't make it up in one year. Most companies can't do the same thing in one year. Not saying you can't, you've got to make the shortfall up, but I don't think you can do it for one year. So I think that's where the challenge is for me, is how do we do it over a few years to take care of the shortfall from last year? So that's just my comment. I don't know how to do it. I haven't reviewed enough to really come up with any huge suggestions. You guys are the experts at it. I just, that part is a big piece of it that I'm trying to wrestle with, so.
I'll piggyback that. I had seven of the same concerns as you did in regards to, you know, going back and forth, you know, is it something that the town can really afford? All in one swoop, if you will, but the more I looked at the data, the more I looked at the outcomes of education, that is, the examinations, reading and math scores, graduation rate, it has become more apparent to me that we are at a significant risk of having a system that will not attract people to this town or minimize, it may have the opposite. And therefore decreasing value of our community. So I definitely think we need to do some, you know, thinking on whether or not we are municipal side to look at what we may be able to put in to get maybe a less of an increase to our mill rate.
That's what we will do. Portland will do the same thing.
Right, so yeah, seeing what we have, that we can afford to hopefully, you know, come across. It may not for other deficits. That's our problem right now. We don't make significant investments. Coming up with that deficit, we started, we need to think about moving forward as we look at budgeting. We need to keep this on the back of our mind. And so I'm just like, you think this, I don't think we have the time or love to really see the continued this way. Because if you look at that line from investment, you can almost see the result of the year or two after as far as the graduation, graduation rates, capital stores with the decline in their investment. So I think, you know, that's just something maybe to think about as we look at other institutions. Maybe there may be a way to lessen the impact to taxpayers.
If this were my home budget, I would totally agree with you this year. I think, you know, I might look at technically kind of, the problem with the school budget is that we really can't do that, right? So that we have to ultimately raise it through the taxpayers. So I think that is the difference in the two and see that the one is getting out of the hole and then you see the other 4.9 is really just, you know, our contractual and increasing cost.
Two other things that I was thinking about when we were presenting. You said that the custodial is going out, 18,000 and some change. What is the overall cost for that? I mean, I'm going back and showing my, you know, part of the budget and we're contracting it out. Would it be smart to maybe look at, and I'm sure they have. I mean, I guess I'm not trying to take over the job of the school board or your crew or look this over. But would it be smarter to have somebody on staff that does the cleaning versus a big jump that way? Kind of like we do with the buses, we head the buses up, you know, on a contract, at least. Through another company or as a company to take care of it, we went back. And it's a push-pull thing, always will happen with these kind of value pickups. But what is the overall cost of that custodial piece?
I think Joel in the audience, he has the, Joel, would you come up to the mic?
No, 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 for the. We actually put it in the budget last year to take a look at it and just the startup cost was almost $500,000 for the equipment. Our plan was last year to possibly look school by school, but what we found out that even just to address what some of these needs or need with the equipment was, was a startup. So it would have been a different jump in a different way.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a good point we thought of it.
Yeah, I think you got probably a fun last point.
I do agree with you though. I think having people in-house is certainly, not that the people that are here are not. I just like with this community connection.
So we don't know the real number of insurance yet, though. It's still an outstanding number.
Right, the medical insurances, I think based on, I think we put in there a 14 or 15% increase. And we, because it's a 15, so we're doing a lot of crying because they told us that it could be as high as almost as 18%.
So Jim, if it's like for a municipality that operates on the calendar through July 1st fiscal. And hence you don't get as good of a number because you're guessing what the second half of the year experience is going to be.
My, not a real number, so this, what's showing now could be higher than what we're actually seeing, it's awesome.
Or no?
Well, it could be a little bit drastic, right?
Thank you. This appears to be, and I didn't come here without having talked to Stu ahead of time. Reasonably conservative, well within our budget. And if it turns out because of the military, we got to do more with less, we should do more with less somewhere else. I really think we should expect this budget. And I really do agree from here, reflections about the future and what this means to us if we can't live with this.
I agree with Jamie regarding, you know, spreading a shortfall out. My question though is this, a couple of things. With, when I look at the shortfall, do you go over these budgets with your department heads?
I do. We actually, I'm not sure how many times we have, I know we have done it with Nick twice. So we meet and we go over.
My question is, what happened here? With, with some of this, I mean, I know some things weren't budgeted and, and there was, you know, things that were left out or whatever, but what happened here? And I guess my question is, you know, were there, how many eyes were there on this? That we have a 600, I, I, I know what kind of a budget shortfall we have, but why is this? I mean, this should never happen. Okay, all right. The other thing I've got to ask is, when you're talking about these other schools around the, around the state, they're different receivers with respect to school aid to education. It depends on, and I'm going to look at what MMA has because some of these, these school districts are higher receivers than others in terms of, so when you're looking at the per pupil cost, you kind of have to look at what they're getting for state aid because they can, they potentially can spend more than we can. We're, we're, we are a high value town. We get less from the state. So my question is, when you're, when you looked at some of these other schools, were these higher receivers or you don't know that? And I, I'm going to check that out because a lot of these, when you're looking at the budgets, they're considerably higher, which I don't know how much they get from the state, how much they don't, but that's a considerable savings, if you will. So to pass, to compare us to some of these, I don't know if that's necessarily comparing apples to oranges. I mean, it's just, you know, you'd have to look at, to me, you'd have to look at some, what the, what the state is actually getting, giving to some of these, these towns.
I would just say that at the end of the day, that is, whether it's through the state funding or.
Right, but what I'm saying, yeah.
That's what they're spending to educate the town.
Right, but that.
I did, yes, you can always continue to slice.
But it is, but it is a huger, it's, it's a huge consideration because I do know that the, the lower value towns get a lot more in state aid than we do and because we're high value. So we're, we're kind of passing more on the cost along to the taxpayers versus they're getting more from the state, which makes a huge difference. I'd be curious to see some of the mill rates in some of these towns, what they're actually, which, you know, what the mill rates actually are. The other thing is, I get, you know, I get this, that we are faced with this deficit, but I will tell folks that it's, you know, I've said this before, it's just, these are very struggling, people are struggling right now. And we have increased taxes in this town. I can't tell you how much over the last, you know, five years. How people are going to end up paying for their property taxes, we have a revaluation that we're going to be facing. That is just going to go off the charts. So when I look at this and I look at 10% increases and I look at this, people have to live within the budgets and I don't know how we do that. But, and I, and I get, we can probably put, take some of this from the surplus. Not a lot, but we could probably take some, but at some point, people have to get real. They have to get real because this is not what's happening out there in private sector. It's just not. And when people have to pay and their property taxes are going up and up and up and Maine is number 47, I think in the nation for property taxes, we are high. And that is just not acceptable. People are struggling out there and I don't know, you know, you know, with this is, does this include the town portion of it? So I'm going to look at, see what those figures are, but I, I think when we look at other, other towns around the state, we have to consider what they are getting for state aid because that, that figure can go a long way in some of this versus our having to put more of our burden on the taxpayer here in, in, in Winthrop, so.
Yeah, yes, yeah, thank you.
So six more districts here for each salaries, definitely lower and is, I'd say property here is desirable. I know we have people moving here, but ultimately the school budget is okay, right? So I guess my, my, it's more of a subjective question, but do you think that the corrective action, we weren't too aggressive here? Like in your professional opinion, do you think, you know, $700,000 to correct it? Was this okay for the following years where we're helping around?
I think that's a good question. We have gone over this budget. Normally I mean, we're administrators like once, one-on-one and still pretty good with the finance director and we look. This time we did it twice because we're worried, as I think I hear in your voice.
Yeah.
It is really going to correct it and, you know, I'll also kind of look to Nick, but I feel fairly, you know, 90% confident that this is going to correct it and then we'll have this baseline budget and then be building from there every year.
Yeah, obviously there's risks on everything, especially nowadays, but yeah, no, I was curious because, you know, it is a big increase, but it, you know, sometimes, yeah, that things happen, so thank you, appreciate it.
So I guess the presentation, one of the things that really stuck out to me, stuck out to me was the, the increase in healthcare benefits. Is that, you add the two years of last year and this year, the two, it's $300,000 increase in benefits. Is that due strictly to the increase in the cost of the same benefits? Or is there an actual increase in the amount of benefits that each individual gets?
So the first number you're seeing is because it was an artificial number.
And what there was an number there, right?
There, yes, there was some, for some money, there were some numbers that were budgeted and I don't know, Nick, whether you can do the actual total that it cost us, right? But the, the increase that you see for this coming year is really due to just the, the rising cost of insurance throughout the state. So every district received the same message from MSMA that we don't have as much surplus to put towards this. So every district needs to be budgeting, you know, between, you know, up to almost 18%, right? Your cost could go up. So that's really just the. you know, up to almost eighteen percent, right? Your cost could go up. So that's really uh just the primarily the increase from from the plans. But I think you're also asking, like, have we increased the benefit to certain entities? Right, they do not think that that there has been a change in what we've offered folks from last year. So currently, we are in negotiations with uh bus drivers and head tech. So that that funding has not changed from last year. And then teachers are going to be into their third year next year. And so there was no increase in the benefit that they're receiving. If it's said you could get single insurance at this percent, that has remained steady.
Thanks.
If you want to acknowledge a comment online by Vicky, it doesn't matter where the funding comes from, overall spending, if it wasn't for people, the children will be affected negatively.
James Leonard.
So one other thing, one body here, I was talking about is the capital improvements projects.
Yes.
You reach out to roadway, you know, the the grade school.
If I want to call to.
I'm sorry. I missed that time, I'm sorry. You can get in this part, I don't have a, you hear.
It's a roadway coming up to the playground, it's resting on the communication button, it's collapsed.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know that. I was just happy to cut this one, thank you, because I didn't know I got done on this one. I thought we existed this one.
This one's been done, it's this, uh we'd love to do a back, but the playground, but this, obviously, cars right now, but that's part of it.
Okay, thanks.
Uh again, this is more service, um it's Harry, um and again, I just want to say thank you to the superintendent for compiling all this down, because I know I know it's not been, um probably monthly, accommodating all the requests. Uh but I do think it's worth saying that what what I envision seems to put us in the best position moving forward, we're all reevaluated. And it's really important that we know where we stand with the school budget and where we stand on municipal. The only way we're going to get a reflective or an accurate reflection is if we figure out what the real cost to run a school district is at home level and requirements that we want. So we need to do it before the reevaluation. Because otherwise, when we go into the revaluation, we won't be able to then say, well, this is where maybe we can bring the mill rate down and look at things and have an actual cost. I don't want to go into it saying, well, that's just the things as they are and everybody's going to, you know, sit in in their taxes without being able to get it brought back down. Um so it's going to be super important that the school board members, I appreciate being here, is it's going to be super important that we work together offset in figuring this out, uh because we want to get ourselves put in the best position in pocket uh to minimize the impact, because there will be a significant impact. We need to be able to reflect, know where we're at between the municipality and the school district. So we can envision what we need to do uh and stabilize the tax rate. And I do think that Dr. Foley understands that moving forward, because I've been able to sit there discussing any issues or something, I understand her concerns as well. Um and so I think if we get this under control, you know, I don't think we would have to look at, hopefully, you know, anything above a four percent increase moving forward. I think that will be a realistic goal.
So Linda, let you do the last, um comment, it can be best for us to go around and Dr. Foley was key sometimes. Want to go ahead and start?
For what you just said, I don't believe it's going to happen. Okay, I have said on this council for all of them. How how many years have we said, oh, we're just going to do this, we're going to do that? The bottom line is, these budgets are way above what people, what what the average person can afford out there for increase in taxes. If you look at your tax bill over the last ten years or the last five years, and what it's gone up. I mean, you, you, people got to be kidding me. People haven't gotten that raises. Everybody's got to live within their means. And when these budgets come forward, I don't believe it's ever going to happen. I've sat in this council for how long? It hasn't happened. They, everybody wants more, 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 more. There's got to be an end of it. I'm not voting for this budget the way it is. I will not, and I don't think that this will be accepted out there. I don't. Unfortunately, I don't. It's too much of an increase, ten point something, forget it.
Is there an increased value for that for you?
I'm I'm going to have to think about it, but I will not vote for this budget. This is way too much. It's too high.
I am supportive of this question. Truly, I think that we should, um, so this budget will be under support. I think really large part with uh Mr. White's comments.
Because uh we did ask for some numbers, we've got a lot of numbers, and I do appreciate your diving into this. Regarding the state funding and where it comes from, the mill rates, uh the comment that was made online, I do appreciate that from Whitney regarding where it comes from, it does not matter. Except for, I mean, it does matter when it comes to taxpayers. Uh but when we're starting to look at the valuation of our children and their education moving forward, as Councilor White had mentioned, I think that is absolutely important. And then, as has been stated, it's not going to be sustainable moving forward, so also, as uh what was stated, reevaluate before we do this revaluation and looking at what we can do, I think is important. But as Andy said, in agreement.
Sorry, I'm just still struggling with it. So I can't say yay or nay this time. Right now, I'm still, I'd like to see some type of as I said, I don't disagree that we need to fix what's broken and don't disagree not investing in these kids. So it's not me saying I don't, uh always supporting it's not that. You know, maybe labeled that way. Um I don't think we look somewhere where we can take some of the debt, I'm just being funny for the town or something. I just think that you can do something somewhere where it's not pulling pulling back on on the taxpayers. And I I don't know where to do that yet, but I'm hoping somebody else can come up with a suggestion and kind of solve that a little bit, but that's for a matter of right now.
Um similar to Jim, where, you know, I I think it would be wise, in my opinion, I think I would like to see this spread out over a year or two, trying to get dig out of the hole, only because such an increase in one year is uh is is quite hit, is quite hit on a lot of people. Uh I have kids in the school system, and I want, obviously, want them to get the best education that they can possibly get. But I'm also a taxpayer in this community, as with a lot of people here, and I think that we need to be very conscious of it. And I understand a lot of the, I I really appreciate the information, I understand a lot of the increases. Uh and, you know, I I guess we're having the toughest time when this is the uh five point, whatever percent it was uh all in one year, trying to dig out of the hole. And I I think it would be a little easier on taxpayers to, you know, maybe take it to two chunks instead of one. I think I think I'd like to see something like that worked out.
And so just again, um I want to reiterate the fact that, you know, I am good able to talk, and I invite you all, please reach out to the superintendent, school board members and administrators, so you can better understand their vision, because I hope that's more important here, because I I agree, Linda, I don't like seeing the increase over year over year over year.
Every year.
Because in the.
The same story.
Right, a lot of different channels. You get, if you find a town where it's decreasing, I want to know.
I haven't seen it.
But it doesn't really happen. What I want to see is the value that we get for spending our money, and I don't think we have it, or haven't had it over the last almost decade. So I am confident after speaking with and being with the administrators, they have the right idea and they know what needs to happen. Whether we spend it upfront or, you know, I don't think if the same thing is now versus later, I don't see the difference. Um I think that if we get it now and we know where we're, where they're at, and they get the the uh ability to make their budget without the distraction of a frozen budget or um or having to deal with this deficit, then we can get the information we need to make important decisions prior to our revaluation. Um and and just say, no, you know, I will never promise a sort of increase of this magnitude of the school budget, but I want to see them get to where they need to be. Um I think education, I I do think the the model might be broken a little bit. So there may be ways moving forward to become more efficient, hopefully um maximize the dollar within the school district. But after talking to the administrators, uh I believe they believe that, and they know our concern. So I I do support this budget, but I will continue to have conversations with all of you um and and find ways that we can look at lessening the impact or improving the processes and making sure there's an open line of communication, because also moving forward, that's the only way that we're going to do this without it becoming uh very painful to the town. Yeah, the the last part of what Aaron's saying is uh we're acting as it right now. It's a big increase and, you know, but at the same time, selfishly, I don't I don't like kids and I want them to go to Winthrop, so I would like to see the school stay and as good a division as it can. I want some more time, see if there's options where we can kind of make this work from a from a certain point of focus on school, because I do think that's important, especially if we want to have a, you know, community. I'd say uh I I'm more on the side of supporting it, and I'm not right now, because I I want to be correctional, we're in a state of of great corrections everywhere, it's not just in your town. But yeah, it definitely is a lot to chew on for sharing, so. Like the new list, very important. Appreciate you.
Have you done good?
Presentation for everybody who wants to.
Um thank you. I'm Lynda McGowan, and I'm a member of the school board. Um I want to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the budget and just give you a little glimpse into what um we are seeing. I'm so glad that you took the opportunity to go uh to the meeting that that Dr. Foley organized for the town and for town council people, anyone who was interested in where that money is going, the money that we're asking for. I want to point out um what a phenomenal job Dr. Foley has done stepping in with a budget shortfall that immense, and we did not have to come back to the town and beg you for money. We did not, because of the measures she took. She's incredibly physically responsible. She looks at every dime, and you can see how things are laid out completely transparently. That's how she operates with the board too, so we know what's going on. I want to personalize it just a little bit and say that, for example, you know, where we're looking and where we can cut. Yes, I know, Linda, I am struggling myself paying taxes. I do not want to put more tax burden on people. However, here is what, here is what happens when you don't, okay? And we've got interventionists at halftime, not full time, we're only asking at halftime at the middle school and the high school. If you look at our numbers in 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 reading in math, they're they're not good. They are not good. We've got work to be done. Whoever these interventionists are, they're going to have to work hard with our kids. And I was in hand for the other day, and I saw a young man who was in my creative writing class, and I said, hey, bud, how you doing? Um you know how's school going? Well, he said I had some stuff going on. I'm not in school, not in school, but they don't like trying to adult at it. I said, buddy, there's nothing I can do. I believe that having an interventionist could have prevented these kids. Our law, our numbers are high too. Um and since Dr. Foley came on board, we now have an active dropout prevention committee, which I am a member of, bringing together different people from different sectors, different stakeholders. Have some really good ideas about how to turn things around that don't necessarily include money. So we're looking at this very, very hard, but I think it's very important for our kids, and I hope you do so.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGowan.
I have one more thing. I totally get what you're saying, but money, throwing money at the problem is not necessarily the answer. Now, the interventionist, I'd like to see maybe more bigger class sizes and maybe a couple more of those folks. But you know what? There there's issues out there that are beyond just throwing money at the school. You can't, you can't, I don't believe for one minute. Now, I I do believe the interventionists do help. They would. However, I'm not willing, you know, there are other ways we can streamline costs in that in that school, I think. Class size is probably one of them. You want to have, but there's a lot of the problems that are that you're seeing, it's not just here. It's everywhere if you if you talk to folks. And there's a lot of things going on outside of the schools that, you know, you can only do so much as a school. You try, but you can only do so much. It's a lot of things going on outside it at their homes that necessarily are a lot more, there are a lot more issues out there.
Let's try various. This time we're going to move on to the police department. Um please stop in this bathroom.
He's taking a couple of.
Don't go, don't go, it's too much fun we have.
So maybe I could allow introductory statement before we enter. So uh obviously, given given what you've just heard here, there's going to be a lot of sensitivity and concern about what the impact of some of these departmental budgets that you're going to hear about tonight is going to have the mill rate. And I have good news for you, just as a reminder, is that there is an overall increase in the municipal budget, but that the projected revenue increase exceeds the projected expenditure increase.
I know, exactly.
It doesn't mean that we have to spend it, but it does relieve some of the pressure. And so, and and well, and and so.
We don't have to go there.
Wait a second, wait a second. So I I did, I didn't want to address that, because there was some discussion here about the use of the fund balance. And just as a reminder, the school district has no fund balance. That's how they got out of the hole this year without having to, okay, so 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 just in case anyone forgot, there's no school fund balance. And could we use some of the town's uh fund balance? Yes, we could.
Didn't you just do that a couple of years ago?
Wait a second, I'm not finished, Roy.
God, we've used it how many times?
Okay, so yes, we could do that. Here's the, here's the danger in doing that. We have our own capital needs that need to be addressed. And so if we spend that money, spreading out the cost of the school budget over the course of a number of years, then you're just kicking the can down the road when it comes to the town's uh capital needs. So just something, you can do that. I'm just giving you hopefully a clear-eyed uh perspective of what that would involve. And then lastly, I agree with the statement that our mill rate is too high. But keep in mind, there are two functions that contribute to a mill rate. One, our property values. So we have them in value, uh reevaluated since two thousand and seven. We're going to be dealing with that next year. And so that gives us an opportunity to lower the mill rate and set the the property values where the market says that they should be. The other factor that contributes to a mill rate is expenditures. And that is completely within the control and purview of the seven of you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the chief.
I I just want to say something on the revale. I got to say something, because last time we had a revale in this town, property taxes did not go down. They did not go down.
Again, it's a function of expenditures, which is completely under the control of the seven members of the town.
The mill rate didn't drop on half the properties.
Well, because the town council at that time.
No, no, but but when they, when they did, when I I got my tax going, geez, it's supposed to drop there. Look at it, well, look what it is. It went way up.
Yeah, because the town and the school department, there was a.
And I didn't own anything big at that time.
Huge disconnection.
Yeah, I do. Once again, uh, as happens wherever we live, we've been on the same side of the fence on this one. Uh, you know, that.
It didn't go down.
As you all know, I haven't worked on business back at the last re-iss call. No wonder Andy, the mill rates kind of down the taxes, they're gonna go off like crazy. Well, the mill rate never went down. Okay, and I'm very skeptical, okay, that by the time we have to reevaluate, the mill rate's not gonna go down again. Wow.
I'm telling you, it's not. Let's go, let's get going here.
That is over here for me.
Go ahead.
Tell me what I gotta spend. Good evening, for those of you who don't know, Bill Sullivan, my IT guy, I have mine, so I know where.
Sorry.
All right, go to the, go ahead to the first. Fiscal year twenty five budget, least apartment was one million seventy two thousand nine hundred and twenty eight. Uh, communications for twenty five was three mil uh, nine hundred and ninety one thousand six hundred and seven. Police department year-to-date expenditures, seven seventy nine, one ninety one, fifty percent expended, sixty nine point three six as of. Temple this month. Communications uh. Percent expended as of this point in time is seventy four percent. Again, as of three ten, and that was that's due driven by uh, the overtime and hours dispatched, so. Total proposed PD FY twenty six budget for. Coming up to next year, one million, one fifty seven, two forty two, which is a seven point eight percent. Uh, seven point six percent increase. That increase is is based on. Uh, projections in the union negotiations that are going on right now. It's primarily driven by the uh. Step increases within the police department personnel line. As well as the increase in uh, what we're figuring in the union contract.
And just so the council is clear, that figure incorporates our current proposal to be police union.
Total proposed. Communications for FY twenty six budget is four thirty three, seven eighty five, percentage increase. Above the twenty five budget, ten point seven seven. Uh, we have three dispatchers and right now that are getting step increases. Within the budget and then the negotiators increase on top of that. That's why that figure is so so high uh. Drivers of the increase of personnel costs increases from the twenty five budget. Uh, we hired three officers in twenty five with experience. And that started them in a higher pay than the officers that were replaced. Increased communications OT by forty one hundred to address past owners in this line and increases in service fees. That we have no control over software and training. I will say that we we are. Uh, going to upgrade our. Communications uh, our CAD system. From Spillman to Spillman Flex that drives all our services into the cloud. Uh, it gives us uh. Many more processes that we don't have right now that will enhance our services. Uh, it also kicks the fact that we're going in the cloud and I'm gonna have to buy servers. At twenty thousand dollars a piece, I've already, you know, we've got one that'll be doing three years and then another in four years, so. Uh, there is initial upfront cost going with this new uh, flex service in the cloud and. Uh, but down the road, let's say let's.
Chief, I just, I want to make sure that I'm not sound on that. So how many servers do you have on ground right now?
We have two servers, one FCD and.
And so your your total projection or your future plan is to know how to have servers on ground. Posted, have anything posted in the cloud? And you're saying that's gonna take over how long to do that?
The the.
We both can be permitted this year after spending this money on on this new cloud-based app?
We we will still have backup until we don't need them anymore. Wait, wait, well, let me get, three months after July first, I think was the prediction for going to this, this new flex.
Cities, yeah.
Yeah.
So wouldn't that though, we're still paying a maintenance contract on those, those servers? And maintenance on those and the application software for that as well as licensing?
Correct.
Thank you.
So we're going to the the new Spillman Flex, which are uh, one of the things we're doing is Ryan had put aside. Thirty eight, thirty nine thousand to upgrade um, one. Nugget of software that we want us to uh, communicate and share information with the other Spillman users. Within the state, and that was called Insight. That money is sitting there uh. To transfer, we're paying a hundred and fifteen thousand every five years for this Spillman program we're running now. To go to the Spillman Flex, it's going to increase to a hundred and seventy five thousand in five, a five year. We're gonna take that thirty nine thousand that we have set aside in the Insight module and apply that to that increase. Uh, so it's, this year you'll see an increase of about six thousand dollars in that communication line. Uh, communication software line uh. So it's not, in in that six thousand we spread out over five years, so it's not an initial shock inside all in one year. As you know, we added the K nine program to our team this year with budget of four thousand dollars to support it. Uh, in our budget, we also put. A line into our C I T putting four thousand dollars away a year moving forward for uh. If we choose to, when this dog is no longer serviceable, we choose to replace it with manual R and B. That's how, that's how it goes. I will tell you that. The first month with the K with the K nine program, we said two R S, one was uh. Uh, seven, seven and a half grams of uh, crack cocaine. And then the other one, the other traffic stop, we yielded twenty six, twenty seven grams of crack cocaine. Uh, so he he's been very effective in teamwork altogether. Um, I look forward to using uh, using him now going forward. Uh, telephone increase in twenty one hundred for new lines and fire department for backup dispatch center. That's something that is. A need and a want. If our system ever goes down with PD, um. We can shift our services up to the fire station and be up and running without a finish. Uh, computer software increase of three thousand to the new software created for the women's future service needs. I said six thousand, but it's three thousand, sorry. Uh. And dispatch funding fees, next slide. And this is a breakdown of what we were last year. Uh, on our fees that we associated to the other communities, what they paid. And as you see. With our new uh. Chart here that our intake is gonna be up to where it should be, where it should have been a long, it's just been. It's just been lagging behind over the years. This is finally the way to correct it and we did it all in one. That's all right, we're done. Unless we wanted to see that slide, we need to buy them.
Go ahead.
Uh, so my next question is regarding building maintenance. So for last year, I saw. Twelve thousand battery, five hundred D R U, spending the eleven thousand budget in for next year. Today I saw a lot go up for replacing the roof. I don't think I've heard that come off yet. Or if that's gonna be in the capital improvements plan review later this next month?
Yeah.
Are we including that budget?
This is, I I wanted that along with the pointing RFP to go out, so we would know how much. To look at the future planning, set aside the future planning.
All right, yeah, these things are just kind of certifications, only we've got okay, so a lot of okay. We need to talk about. The nausea propane, propane was seriously drawn up, propane car, did not, I'm trying to think of that. You know, we're used to the propane.
Well, you can propane from generators.
Usually, I hope it's, it's, it has increased by nine percent.
Got propane up at the uh, power site and we got propane down here at the PV. And if we get. To the point where where we get that second building up there, we do equipment. And another, another one of the happy deals up there will prepare a little generator tank.
Oh, yeah. Wanted to know, and this was currently talking more towards the end, I think, how to help um. When you, I'm at this meeting, we have, we're going, we're leasing at over one, uh, sorry. Is that driving costs here, we don't see the revenues, which is probably pointed out anywhere as a in can. Are we getting, what are we getting charged back to help that revenue or that, nothing to come back and compensate this?
It's gonna be even larger.
Okay, I think I didn't see that line, so I'm trying to do.
So so that would be in the, on the revenue budget, right? So so obviously, that's a sort of a new development and so we will include that in the revenue budget.
So, and same, if you do the same thing with your salary, right, Paul?
Yes.
Now, getting back to this. Charge us a little charging out for dispatch. Are we paying, how how charging people, is it per capita, are we charging per what the town bases?
What we're, what we're done is we split it up on fifty percent per capita, fifty percent of the call usage. And call usage is based on a uh, pretty average.
That's just obvious, that's a PD, is that all calls? They're not all called to us, right?
That is any call that we dispatch and draw a number four for, let's say for retail. Fire calls, EMS calls.
Yeah.
We don't do police up there, so.
Right, right. So do you do you anticipate that they're all, or trying to spread that cost? In in another year to try to get more, because I don't know this.
What we, what we did is we, we, in the first year, their cost increase goes up seventy five percent, second year it goes up hundreds.
Okay.
No, I didn't, sorry, yeah.
Um, I was actually just getting one, one thing else. Um, so are you aware of central main hours uh, work on two or two? If you mean, you know what, that's actually in the news.
Nope.
So, and I'll be a matter, it's impacting as well. So they they've decided they're now having a switch. Which is gonna be helpful in the fact that they're, so one third is a radio. It's not likely, so there's one A line, which you guys know very well, right? Um, they're now wanting to change the switch to, it's not gonna be true rate fee, but. If the main line in the substation up in Rockwood goes off, they now have a switch that they've installed at East Twindra. That they're gonna be able to manually throw to provide not to the police station, uh, the school. And hopefully the tower, uh, the fire station. I I have a request from the engineers, I have to update you something along. But I'll just say.
Yeah, I suppose that's very good.
Yeah, probably.
So I just had a couple of questions on a couple of line items here in the budget.
Does it have to do with cruise maintenance?
Yeah, I know, I will. We gotta do this, can't we? No, it doesn't. Um, the. Uh, one line that showed up this year, I don't see anything in it before is Sergeant Stipendent Sentis. Can I explain that?
What we did is we broke, broke um, broke out the percentages that he gets paid for. Uh, being a supervisor and then for his pay for his education. It's always been in the personnel line, but Anthony and I wanted you to be aware of what. The straight uh, salary is versus what they're getting in uh, benefits.
So we're gonna have to look at the sergeant pay line. You'll see that it it dropped from essentially eighty three thousand dollars in the current year's budget. To seventy six thousand dollars in the coming year, so so. So, and we're we're not gonna be paying Sergeant Drown any less. We like him just fine.
The, I guess this kind of does have to do with cruises, gasoline. Oh, my question. I was looking at the, the twenty four. Actual was seventeen thousand, and I get it to this fluctuation, but I'm just wondering if that number can be a fit item. You got twenty seventeen thousand to uh, the, and then we budgeted twenty six and we're at only ten right now. And then we budgeted another twenty five for this year. Does that, it just seems like.
I did drop, I just dropped.
Yeah, I see you dropped a thousand. Do you think that we need, when you go to drop a whole? What we actually spent.
We might, I mean, it's a total guessing game. The reason that, the reason that. Well, and the reason that actual looks is because you bill it on a quarterly basis and so it probably hasn't, the bill hasn't, hasn't.
Well, yes, yes, I aside the ground doing all of the the fuel force billing, he sends it out all the departments of the. Uh, and he just submitted to National, I think, last week, January, February, March, gas bill.
Yeah, yeah.
So that'll be added on top of that.
Okay.
So you folks know, last week, we actually participated in a bid with main power options for gasoline. And we got a bid of uh, four cents above the index price, which we thought was really, really good, so we're we're glad to. Uh huh.
It's locked.
Yes.
Um, so I understand the sergeant, uh, the decrease in the sergeant and the PD lieutenant, that's a nine percent increase?
Yeah, so the reason, yes, so the reason for that is we want our police lieutenant to actually earn more money than our sergeant does. He outranks the sergeant.
Okay, yeah, yeah, right. Um, let me see here, there was one more question. Cell phones. Um, you've got fifteen percent increase. Why do you have a fifteen percent increase in that?
Usage would would shoot to put four more cameras in our cruisers and those are all cell phone usage.
Okay, do you guys all have, does the town, and we've discussed this before, does the town have one account that they. Basically negotiate with these cell phone operators or do we have a multitude of accounts out there? Because we've, we've talked about that several times to try to.
What we're doing right now, when there's.
Yeah.
We we have, that's the model again, and we've submitted our.
Right.
USO of them, they're under the impression that they're gonna save us twenty percent. Our cell phone bills. Uh, and that, I think, what do we have, like fifteen? Fifteen different numbers that are associated to the PD because of all the cameras and activities and the cell phones that we use.
Okay.
Uh. That's something we're we're looking, I haven't had the conversation with Anthony yet, but once we get those figures back and figure out. Uh, where they fall, one of the things they guarantee, and we've been testing right now with the phone being given us. Is that the service, a service around this community really stinks, is poor, poor, poor service. We drop off all the time, so the guys are constantly having to log back into their computers and they not have cell service. Uh, so we've been testing and having a lot we want to expand on the tasks we've done so far.
Sure, so.
And and on the microphone, chief.
Actually, I have two old brothers, I still give the demo phones.
Right.
Take around, um, I've had guys bring up the cruiser with them, um, and just test big calls, see the service if you're. If you'll sell their garage or some other, uh, if you can service, see if the other phone has service. And so far, um, I had nothing but positive feedback from everyone. All the, our typical dead zones, I don't know where they are in town, just for being full, um, and they. All the, our typical dead zones, I don't know where they are in town, just for being full, um, and they've not found any. It's dropped, that's possibly lost the service.
Okay, but I guess my question, questioning Anthony is.
We have one cell provider, we have not negotiated any contracts since I've been here.
Okay, but is it possible to, with, when they're talking to T-Mobile, is get everybody on the same page and go in there and say, can you save us some money here? What?
You add in.
One of the, one of the big things is T-Mobile has five G, uh, USL says they have like five G and that's all we're getting, but that's not all we're getting.
Yeah, it's only first responder vehicles in the public works to, to, uh, account.
That's it. All right.
One of the good things about, about looking into this also is that T-Mobile. Here, we have a crisis, and I talk about throughout the state of Maine, and everybody's calling in, what's it doing with USL, it shuts, it shuts it down. But what T-Mobile does is they block out a percentage of that bandwidth that gives first responders. So we will never be compromised in an emergency situation. That's one of the things I like, and that's something I would pay extra for, but they're, they're saying, they're, they're gonna give us a better service at a better place, so.
So, so is that, is that, um, still with, like, the ambulance and is that, you got, can you get with the fire and the ambulance?
One cell phone account.
Yeah.
USL, we cell phone, everybody we have, she's in my name, I just need to get out of it, because I, well, all, all PD phones are in your name. So, because the account was originally under the fire department, it just, everybody added into our account. At the time that we did that.
Right.
It's ten or twelve years ago, maybe, um, actually, I inherited it from the previous chief, so that was nineteen years ago. But at the time, USL, by heart, had the best coverage in town, and that has changed a lot. You may or may not know that T-Mobile is actually negotiations to buy up your cell.
Right, I mean.
Might be, but there is only one account with all phones in it, so.
Okay.
If we switch to a different company, everybody.
Okay, that was my question, okay. I'm good.
Okay, so, getting back to the T-Mobile line, and this is probably, hang on a minute, somebody's probably forgetting, or, uh, and. Uh, thirty-seven zero, let's just go, and you have a line of nineteen, four, thirty-four, eleven, why is that separated this year versus any other year? And it says vehicle, vehicle, why wouldn't that just talk from the gas media or? I have a question. Like I said, nobody more questions than that.
Yeah, that would, you know, why it's sure not to.
Nineteen thirty.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's looking, that's probably me just posting it in, so I can move that down.
Okay.
Into that.
That probably answered the same question I had, or one other question I had about the inverters, or on this taxes, they had it was a same line and four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It was all by itself, you just posting it there and then you're gonna put it actually in, in with the sixty-five hundred dollars that's on the thirty dash one hundred, under the dispatch line?
Yeah, that was probably done.
Same line?
Same thing, so.
Okay, so while I'm reading, and I, it's like, we didn't ever do that before in previous years, and then why it was separate, so, just trying to.
No, yeah.
My head, what, what was happening?
That has to be reposted to a different.
Okay, um, the last question I'm gonna ask, I mean, it may be a big ask, but for somebody who doesn't know, and I'm gonna wanna ask all the firemen, so everybody's listening. You have your vehicle, you have your units, I have no idea which unit we're talking about, if, would you get more detailed, I'd like to know what the vehicles are.
I do know that I have the same problem in, on my spreadsheet, on my computer, explaining to every vehicle, so I will get together with Nick in that series.
But maybe, just now, can I just like to know what's the bigger problem, what year is this one?
I think it's a year. Right?
Years, I think, it just, maybe, I have a, just a detail, there will be a little helpful when I'm looking at it, and then you guys think, jeez, we're spending this on repairs, I at least can look up and say, well, how old is it? I mean, it does be a little bit of correlation of kind of what we're spending, and I think that's just across the board, I would, I'm gonna ask. I, I, I've asked the same thing to the input, it's just, I can get a little more detail, but not a huge spreadsheet, but just some more information, what we're talking about.
I had to do the same thing on my, I don't want to show, I could show them all straight, so I, and I still have to follow George, and I'm saying, that's quite constant.
All right, I appreciate, thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna, was saying, I think that I asked last week, few weeks ago, I don't even remember now.
And then you do it.
Well, no, no, I'm saying, I was wondering, we, each apartment list out their, um, what are we, vehicles or whatever? High items, uh, with, like, identifiers, so when we come off of this, can we literally just be like, yeah, that's that, in the future, and that would be. Well, I think that, I think that the residents have a right to know, you know, so if that information becomes, it's easy enough to do, it just takes, will take time upfront to do it.
Yeah, just takes time.
Time, yeah, that's, yeah.
I, this, this question's hopefully to work, it might be for, what, what is the utilization story? Why, I don't, I talk in the part of my, I just, I, it's all.
Isn't that like cafe and?
I don't know.
Ol's, yeah, get, isn't it?
They have to do, you, you guys do good testing, so they all do good testing, and they have to get a medical.
All right.
That doesn't follow, doesn't break insurance?
Yeah, it's kinda.
Isn't that like a, is it like?
Any of the thing line, I mean, line that was put in during COVID.
Well, we actually did it before, the, the, the big one.
It's fine, it's time to. I don't think there's any money that has been expended on that.
No, no, there won't, that's why I've gone around there. Yeah, it's a box and, it's serious, I didn't know if we were using it, it was, yeah, if it's COVID or.
They'll stay, they'll swine the, max those rest here.
All right, I'm there, or I mean.
Budget.
No, I, yeah, it's more just, I wanted to know what it's for, so.
Yeah, it's in case COVID two gives us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Next one will be the back of our, that's huge, it's scary.
Everybody. Yeah. These are, yeah, the murders. We don't have a line item. There's an, a person. I'm from.
I'm half.
The murders. I can have some.
Right, but I don't see.
Then I just got.
Yeah, I just. And again. Now, just a depth on the pad, so.
Are you ready on?
Yeah.
All right, good evening. So, uh, I think everybody in the room, so. Uh, this is our budget, I will, uh, not mention that we are the least expensive organization in this community, but we'll go on from there.
We buy a lot of trust.
What do I need to add?
Move on there. Yeah, just sit down there, right?
There you go, so our, why, budget was two twenty-nine, two ninety-three. We are fifty-three percent of the year through that, but I do make the note that we're thirty days away, we have two payrolls for the most part. One in the fall, one in the spring, so we'll hit a payroll thirty-ish thousand dollars, uh, at the end of this month, or next, it's not tomorrow. The end of next month, we'll have our second pay, so that will obviously catch up some of those numbers. I think last year, we turned in about thirty-five thousand dollars, if you didn't extend, um, that might be a little tighter this year, but I still don't expect it to be in the, in the rent at all. So our currently proposed budget is two forty-one oh sixty-one, which is a five point one percent budget change. There isn't a lot of dramatic changes in our budget, um. We have increased our electricity up eight thousand dollars over our current year, um. We're hoping that that will be too much, we're, we're hoping that we will not see that kind of increase. I can get into that a little bit more, we did increase our payroll, we're currently at fifteen ninety-six. And we've gone eighteen fifty is what I'm proposing for next year. One of the things that we do is, is we get behind in our pay per se, we usually have a big jump, and then we go three percent, three percent, three percent. So about five years ago, we jumped to fifteen dollars an hour, and then we had three percent increases. And it just drops us behind, so one of the things I would caution to that is even though that sounds like a big increase. You have to remember the word pain on call, so if our average fire call is an hour. So you're basically saying, leave your work, leave your house, come to a call, you get fifteen dollars and ninety-six cents an hour. We're gonna make it eighteen fifty, so it's not forty hours a week, it's not huge numbers over the course of the year. We do pay for our training, which is usually two to three hours every other week, um, so you might earn, you know, thirty to forty dollars, forty-five dollars on three hours of training. Usually where that gets expensive is when we have firefight one and two programs where there's a lot of extra Saturday and that kind of stuff. We do currently have a program going on right now, just started it last week, I have, um. Three members, uh, going through that program, and I have several others that are taking parts and pieces of it to clean up stuff they've done in the past. So that is an increase that will hit us a little bit, but again, we generally turn some money back in in the payroll, so. We will still be relatively okay with that, um. We did get a state grant to pay for the cost of the books and the equipment that goes along with it, but it doesn't cover payroll. Most of that will be taught in-house, we do have some state instructors coming, but again, we're basically increasing the hour, increase to try to get. I don't wanna say it's an incentive for people to show up, but it's a piece of the puzzle. Um, probably the biggest change that we're making is we've, I actually have a training officer that invests a lot of time to prepare ourselves for our training sessions. And let's see him in order to do a better job of, not so much better job of training, but a better job of tracking, planning. Documenting our trainings, there were four hours during, we have roughly twenty-six train sessions a year. To spend four hours on those days or the day after or whatever, to need the documentation, every transition should have. What we call a lesson plan, explains everything that's going on during the session, who showed up and all that as well, so. We document that, what we could do better, a lot better, so we're actually increasing the training officer, that would be a little different, they will be actually, um. Logging their hours on a timesheet, just like everybody does and pay. Versus part of that available, so that's a bit of an increase. Uh, the electricity, we saw quite a bit of a change with the installation of the heat pumps. And there's a couple of reasons for that, um, we're having troubles, we have had trouble since the day the building was built. To get the HVAC system working properly with our computers. Um, I've done some work with it, but even the company that installed it is struggling to make the system work. So, and now that we've put the heat pumps in, they're supposed to get the heat pumps to work with the HVAC system. That's not, Anthony and I have spent countless hours talking with companies and changing the company actually, we're, we're moving away from. The company that we had in order to try to get those to work. The other side of it though, maybe this is my personal opinion a little bit more, but there's only so much a heat pump's gonna do when it's ten degrees outside, five outside. So I think we need to get the two systems to work better together. The idea was we were gonna save on our propane, and we'd, we'd get a little extra cost on electricity, that really didn't pan out. As far as I can tell, we're gonna probably spend close to the same in propane. And had a pretty healthy increase in the electricity until I literally just shut them off. They're off at this point, until we can get those systems to work. Um, again, come to that was from day one when the building was built, and it really got exasperated when we got the two systems. Kind of working, causing it to go, so we're working on that issue, but that is why the electricity won't be as bad in the future. We haven't made the full jump, so our original propane system is still working. There are some improvements though, we, we have made it so that our, the furnace system, out of what we, we're trying to change, couldn't change, we're trying to get it to shut down a little bit in the summer. With the hot water, and it was just running constantly. And I guess we figured out finally, I guess someone there that said, basically have the same hot water system that a hotel would have, so that every sink and faucet has. Medium hot water as soon as you turn it on, and that has been. So, um, I, again, I think we'll be better off in the long run, but that's a big driver of where we are. That payroll, um, for training, like I said, I think will increase a little bit because of the, the firefight program we're doing now. I think for the most part, the OSHA requirements for training has been put aside, that's kind of been put on a shelf. But it has definitely woken up us to, we do need to do certain levels, meet certain address of training. And again, we really haven't put together a really long-term budget for our master stations, which is obviously by far our biggest cost. Uh, we aren't working on that, as a matter of fact, I think the, I think twice I gave you. Spreadsheets of what our trucks were in years, mileage, I'm not sure if I put much on mileage of it, I think about that much, because we just don't use them like they should be used, but. It had the list of what they use for pumps and water and all that, so get that to you again, if we're talking about, we have for equipment. The last couple of sessions, we talked about that stuff I had.
So then, um, I think I have a lot of questions, some of the pilots, I don't know, but that one, I'm gonna tell you about the E-bombs, because I use them solely in my house, they will work at them alone. And they, they were, I was skeptic, but I think he just.
I also have a heated commercial building, so.
That's not very well.
Well, I, it's just that, increase in the training ops that you have, even, do we train other departments or other towns? Do we get anything back on that for hosting the train?
So we don't, we sometimes do training in conjunction with other departments, so we'll all go out and work on the same thing together. This firefight one program is between Winter and Momma, so I would honestly say that we may be doing more of the lion's share of the instruction, partially because. We have instructors.
Right.
In-house, but, um, you know, like I said, the, the bulk of what we would have to spend either for us or them was paid for by the state grant.
Oh, I just was, you said we had the trainers, so just didn't know we would be able to say, hey, we're also training, you know, it's gonna be X dollars for, for people to come in and do this. To help supplement some of that training officer detail that you're asking, very difficult too, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, usually what happened, the biggest cost if we did a training like that would either be our own internal payroll, they are providing one person. We have three or four that are dividing up. Not all of them are there at the same time, but we have like three or four that are sharing the duty, and they have one person as well, um. A lot of times, like if we have a class where we are bringing outside people, and you have to pay someone to come in to teach or something, we do that from time to time, and we'll break that up by student.
Okay.
So, yes, but it's usually a pretty minimal, we're not making money on the way.
No, I can take some, just enough to help cut some of the costs, but, and when you're talking, I've got the department scene with loaded heating oil. And you're down like eleven cent, I raised over around forty, and maybe even more than that, you think you're still gonna need that? Only if you have about eight thousand dollars worth of heating oil, and we get the E-bombs, we're gonna go up on that.
Yeah.
Absolutely, on, on March twelfth, we're five thousand four eleven.
Yeah, it's, it's just really hard to tell, I think like I mentioned to you guys at the last meeting, when Mike Ketchens was here, we just really need like a full year's experience with it.
Just saying, you, we need to, I can see we've cut themselves about forty, almost fifty percent on that, on that line.
Well, I think, I think though, our concern is just that the heat pumps and the propane system are working against one another. In the fire station right now, and so it's a matter of, we believe, so it's a matter of how quickly we can, can get that right.
Just, this is the example, when we have really cold winters in jail. We were supposedly the warming shelter, I couldn't get the building above fifty-two degrees, all that. With every system we had, you know. With every system we had, you know, even close the windows, you know, we, everything we did, we could not. Get ourselves above fifty-two degrees. So I really don't know, we don't know.
Questions and stuff.
I think honestly, probably both those lines are a little bit hot, but we're trying to be.
Next question, and I'm just sit back here and listen, uh, on the HVAC, you just talked about it a little bit saying. If you put three thousand dollars in for like maintenance, thinking this must be repairs maintenance, you think we're needing that much maintenance for today? Twelve hundred dollars and sixty.
I got an eight hundred dollar bill.
Gonna add to it.
And we have a twenty, I think it's a twenty-two hundred dollar HVAC. Contract, they come in and replace the filters so many times, they do a furnace search.
So are we gonna see that high level of use of that HVAC system or when we use the heat pumps more?
We hope not.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, but again, I think we need a year's experience to really, really dial it in. Unless anyone be overly concerned about that. The school system has faced the exact same problem with the exact same vendors that we have in in trying to coordinate. Their their HVAC system and their and their heat pumps. And so um. They're starting to see a little success with that. We anticipate doing the same.
I will say I have heat pumps and my electricity went up and I asked why. Though, actually, my supervisor's, her big energy guy, he said when it's cold out. It's less efficient. And I didn't know that, so, but that's why, you know, it's, you're gonna get increased costs. So, didn't realize that when I come in.
I'm sure I didn't tell you.
It is.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Sorry, you got it. I'll probably ask many questions.
Awesome, thanks, Derek. Are you good on this list?
So uh, FY twenty-five, seven sixty-nine, eight thirty-six. We are five hundred nineteen, oh eighty-five, sixty-seven point four three percent. So a little above the fiscal year, but what we've had to tackle so far, I think that's pretty good. A lot of stuff, I'll keep the numbers looking good. Proposed is nine oh four, seven ninety-seven. It's up seventeen point five three percent. It seems like a lot. You know, but there's a lot to do. Um, and you go through the budget, you'll see that stuff. I didn't take this lightly. I look at every single line item and I looked at it again and again. There's a lot of things that um need to be done, really that have been put off for a long time. Some of the drivers to that are increase payroll, working those two labor positions, going to full-time year round. To help bolster what the town's needs are. Another one is building maintenance, so I'll give you an example. Think the budget's like five thousand dollars for a building maintenance and that's been wiped out. That was wiped out already just on the electrical. Because there was stuff that just I could not live with in good conscience. I mean. It had to be brought up to to COVID standard. Um, Andy was in the building the other day and and showed him the bathroom. I love that money, right? Replace the toilet, so you don't need to luck and be set on it.
Pretty disgusting situation.
So there's a lot of things that have been put off over the years and that's what the increase.
I didn't need, I thought I had to reflect upon you, just, I was pretty shocked that it had. Obviously existed for an extended.
Well, and then again, you know, now sometime it's that difference. Um, increased training budget. So when I got here, I realized that the the training. Uh, there were no documents as far as what had been done for training. So since I've been here, people have had chainsaw safety and to your point. Uh, when I set up that chainsaw safety class and I did it, it was free to the town. I don't mean I referred to May local road center and some other people. Actually called the fire department and asked me if we had anybody that needed to be certified. So we are working that one, right? I actually brought Momma and some of their people. So. We're doing more of that stuff and and I'm finding these places that we get to train for free. So one of them was. Excuse me, chainsaw safety. We had flagger training because these things are mandatory. They're not, oh, it sounds like a great idea. No, your insurance company is gonna require it. Okay, things like chainsaw safety, flagger training. Um, I sent people to uh the main local road center for road maintenance. So there's no power to a powerball engine, it should be done with them. I don't shoot the way of all this stuff. So all these things that haven't been done in the past are gonna be done in the future. They need to be. Now, I'll give you an example. Had a new person start today and um in talking with them, all of my people have been um. Been immunized for hepatitis. This new person is not, that's something that we have to offer. We pick up these. Pops, right? So we have to do this stuff and all that's gonna be reflected in the budget. There's there's no way.
So, yeah, so uh. To speak to the first item there about the payroll increase for the two new labor positions. Part of that cost will be offset by a reduction in the cemetery budget because. That's where we were paying for, you know, that seasonal help in the past, so you'll see them.
Uh, bringing most of the maintenance costs in-house, the mechanic that we have, Gary Perry is excellent. Um, he knows his stuff and he is um. Certified to do state inspections. So we're bringing our state inspections in-house. Once we have them under our belt and it's running smooth there, talk to Paul and Rick Pease and. So we're looking at ways to save money. This is what you're paying us to do.
Same vein, uh, met last week with Lance Rennie, who previously had done the repair work on our ambulances. And so he proposed that we get a lift over in the garage so that we could do, you know, a lot of the stuff, not only with. Public works and police department, but with ambulance and fire service as well. So um. So yeah, so we think we'll be able to reduce some of our maintenance costs moving forward.
So I I saw, give you an example, last door, we lost a transition. In the truck, get us a transport. That is something in the past that sent thousands of dollars later, it would have been fixed in the back. We can do that.
Yeah, when we used to have a full-time mechanic here, we did a lot of that. That's, yeah, you can, you can save a lot. Yeah.
These are things that when you do that. Change how you structure things. You just can't have.
Oh, yeah.
Truck driver one, truck driver two.
I get it.
Uh, so we're bringing most of the maintenance costs in-house and that's gonna alleviate a lot of the pain that way. As as a lot of you know, you've heard me say it before. When I got here, we had a lot of work, we bring equipment up to spec. Uh, but we're, I'd say about eighty percent there now. So while I'm following this next part of the issue, you guys have questions for, and about public works.
The building maintenance, I know you said you just had a discussion, shouldn't that call under capital?
That's a good question. There is some capital that we'd wanna do.
Yeah.
Um, and again, capital to me is the bigger money, right? When I say building maintenance, I'm talking about. Um, an electrical went out, right? So we bring somebody in to replace the electrical outlet or, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
You've been putting this off for so long that it's that it's big enough.
No, I understand. It just seems to be the biggest, obviously, some some value in alcohol and yeah, a percent increase. So I didn't. Didn't know what what improvements are we doing, it's not a percent increase versus that shouldn't be a capital expense that maybe we need to prevent as a capital expense.
Well, there is, so.
He made this.
No, I think I would see a requirement.
Like this, I use this office stuff inside the building that you're gonna put in.
Yeah, so um, if you bend to the building and upstairs where the office is, we'd like to bump that office out to the edge of the stairwell.
Yeah, that's that's a count, that's that's a count, that's that's not a building.
Well, again, you know, you need to look at increasing the footprint in the in the future.
Yeah, you know, no, I'm I'm what I'm saying is what you wanna do is wrong. I just didn't know if it really should be done this time. Um, and there's another line item. And the skin supply goes back to that, it's on the gas wing. Again, that's thirty-seven, zero, thirty-seven. That's just something that you best, it's just the way you do a couple of things, you you post it, the eight thousand dollars and.
Which which line you look at?
Thirty-seven, zero, thirty-seven. Does gasoline you did or not, it could be gasoline, maybe you need to pass.
So so what so what we did there is we just consolidated all of those into one account. So you'll notice that. Below it, all the vehicles no longer have a gasoline budget and it was just. Overly onerous and didn't serve any real good purpose to try to split those costs between individual vehicles.
It's.
Now, that's different for for maintenance, obviously. You wanna track your maintenance cost, but for but for gasoline costs and so much.
That's quite an increase. Uh, because if you add the other lines up, like twenty-five thousand. For the separate lines, we're bumping up to forty-one. Eleven four is fifteen, twenty-three, twenty-four and a half. Yes, twenty-eight, yeah. Yeah, okay, maybe I was further. Oh, I I had enough to call them next door, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
That that makes sense. And I see one last question, is the power program, because I'm not really what you're trying to do with the power program. I was wondering, yeah, twenty-five thousand, should that be a cap as well?
So, I mean, no, no, so so what we talked about, what we talked about doing was adding the. Computer system for the spreading and the um, and the liquids. And so. You know, I I guess, James, it's six to one, half dozen to the other. I mean, we could reduce the operational cost and increase the capital budget, so.
It should be, you know, in generally, it's anything like that, any over certain price, usually it's also no capital expense, am I not right?
Yeah. Yeah, but it's not, but that but that twenty-five thousand dollar cost, for instance, is not, is not just one of those, it's.
It's a statement, but one, one does cost probably over five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Correct.
So but but I would say, but I'd say for an organization this size and for public works, five thousand dollars would be too low of a threshold for a capital.
Just looking at what what our previous policy has solved and I have clarification, just.
Uh, is so if it's, but if it's something that's not budgeted year over year, and you know you're spending it in that fiscal year, you wouldn't move that over into your operational budget?
Well, well, I would have to defer to Kevin if that's a cost that we're gonna see be seeing year year after.
Is it not gonna be that?
No, no, no. Yeah, but the reason of putting it in the budget is to get that done this year.
Right.
Then in the future, that cost would translate into the CIP and be part of a truck purchase.
So again, to James's point, we could do, we could, we could slice it either way. Yeah.
That's that's a good point. So you can, in the future, that monies that you'll spend. To put these systems on will be incorporated into the CIP to buy a new truck.
And and Jim, to also to your point, so. I've been sort of working, at least mentally, on the fact that we have the new purchasing policy. And whatever the threshold is, which I think is twenty-five thousand dollars to engage in competitive bidding. That's sort of the the threshold for a capital. Yeah, absolutely.
So let me, if we make some clarifications, the trucks that we're gonna put these systems on and there are trucks that we're not.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I just gotta, just to your comment about uh, pushing it into the CIP after we get these systems set up. Does that mean we're adding another truck to the fleet? Is that what we're doing? Just don't we already have a schedule for all the trucks that we currently have?
They're putting a schedule together, yes. In fact, the truck that we were going to put in for this year are bumping one more year. Because I think you can keep going. So that is trying to help out that way.
Yes.
So by putting these systems in these trucks, the way I'm gonna purchase them is that the next time we buy a truck. We'll have this system that we can just incorporate into that truck. So it would just be the cost of putting it in.
Yeah, um, as Jim started to approach, it's up to find a line between one is a capital improvement, one is the maintenance. And sometimes their class started quoting to, boy, you want those things to appear in your budget. For instance. The bathroom, that one mentioned bathroom, is pretty uh crappy if you're part of that one.
Yeah.
And is it maintenance to replace that bathroom or is that a capital improvement? It's an absolute necessity. So you didn't just decide to make an improvement.
That's nothing to do with all the things to speak of.
I'm not freaking had it. You should.
I have.
I'm done.
All right, can I go?
Yeah, with respect for who had worry.
Well, do you, do you wanna go or do you want me to go? Continue, because I mean, I I wanna get over with all this. You want to continue?
I did, but I'm not going.
Go ahead.
I'm just not going.
Okay, so I'm gonna go. Um, I I I've added up these columns. Um, to uh the budget versus the year-to-date and the actual, uh, not not the actual, well, the actual thirty-five thousand. Um, so you have in here thirty-five thousand for this year, correct, for the vehicle repairs and maintenance. Um, you, I've added up the columns and they totaled about twenty-four thousand that you budgeted last year. You actually spent around sixty-six thousand. If I add the middle columns, and here's the thing, just FYI. We really should have a chain, an actual dollar figure. It's easier to follow. You have the percentage. But you don't have the dollar figure here with, when you're looking at budget, last year's budget to this year's budget. It's just easier to follow. So I mean, that's just a side note.
But to but to clarify, Kevin didn't write last year's or this current year's.
No, no, I'm just saying to you in the future.
No, no, I'm, you you said, you said.
It's easier, but but.
You said last year, he budgeted twenty-four thousand dollars. He didn't, he he didn't.
Well, whoever budgeted twenty-four thousand, I'm just, it's it's it was there. I I I'm not, I'm not gonna argue who who budgeted, but. I mean, it was budgeted last year twenty-four. So my question is, is it a. Roughly a nine percenting or eleven thousand dollar increase in the budget from over last year's?
Or what we spent now, I mean.
For what you're budgeting this year over last year's?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, but it's less than what we've spent this year.
No, I get that.
Because of the maintenance needs.
Because that's what I'm, I wanna.
And a lot of that's gonna have to do with the fact that this stuff in-house.
Right, that's what I wanted.
Oil changes, the the maintenance.
Okay.
That that we can do.
No, I just wanna clarify, because like when I'm looking at this, I really should, we should have another column here with.
Yeah.
The actual increases that we're looking at instead of just the percentages, because you can't, you gotta kind of follow through everything and. You add them up and it's just, you know, so.
And merge accounts or.
Yeah, it's just, it's it's it's, it clarifies it if you add a column. What? Or subtotal, yeah. I mean, it just clarifies it. So there was one more that I, um, someone else can go. I I had one more question, but I. Lost my train of thought here. Um, oh, I have that here. So it would have been the same on the the vehicle fuel. Okay, all right. Yeah, I get the twenty, yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
I can get some.
Well, our accountant should be able to do that. I mean, when she runs these spreadsheets, we've always had, well, not always had, but. We used to have a column here that showed the increase or decrease. And you really need to look at that, because when you're looking at all these, it's easier to follow.
Agreed, man, that's what I'm saying.
You know, um. Right, so our accountant should be able to do that.
Accountant's right there.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but our our.
These are the same forms that we've used this past year.
That's what we 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 should be able to do that. And the the departments want to do that. So.
Uh, line number seventy-four twenty-five, snow removal contract. What are we talking about there? That's um, that's if we have to hire trucks to haul stuff off or we need a snow dump or something like that, which we didn't use, it should.
It's it's one of those things, Roy, you budget it and hope you never actually have to spend it.
Got one of the libraries.
Oh, no, no.
So just more of an update as far as the streets we were maintenance, I remember we were sharing, not having another town, yeah. So, just more of an update as far as the streets we remain in, so I remember we were sharing, not having another town, yeah.
Norma, the, the, the sweeper was, uh, I sent the sweeper out to be looked at, right? Because if I'm using it for the next few weeks, I was hoping like sooner. And um, I got word on Friday that the compression test on the John Deere motor came back a little less than what we, I hope it would be.
Isn't that a sweeper?
It's a, it is a newer sweeper, um, and my understanding is this motor had been attended to once before for the same reason. Um, talking with the mechanic and talking to different people, it's not gonna get any worse, it's not gonna die on us. We can run it, we just have to be cautious, and I have the dealer and the manufacturer coming down next week to do training. They're gonna be trained for us and Monmouth at the same time, and I'm gonna report it, so that we have everything. And then we're gonna have a regular um, scheduled maintenance program for that machine, and one of the reasons that the motor has lost compression is because they weren't cleaning up the filters for the shit out, and you know, I'm not, you know. I've got a maintenance in.
My last question regarding what James and Andy were talking about earlier as far as the additional on the back of the Public Works building. Now, just to clarify, when we move into capital improvements review, um, when we look at the Public Works garage, that was a request for a new garage, correct?
Yes, but, but the thought there is, we'd have to start stocking some money away for the distant future when we can build a, a new one, and.
That's also, I was thinking, as we encompass all of the different.
I don't think anything should come on the table at this point, we know we need stuff, put some money aside for future goals and plans, but I think we need to look at every available option at this point.
Thank you. The sixty thousand dollar increase in the staff, um, what was that again for? The twenty two percent increase?
Those are the two labors, the full-time labors that we, we've talked about.
All right.
Yes, well, that, well, they were seasonal cemetery workers that were transitioning to full-time, which will come with an added cost, but will have some offset in the cemetery budget.
So, we talked about that, right?
You heard me say it already, even after a few of those years, it isn't detailed on the trucks too.
Yeah, a- absolutely, in fact, um, it's funny that you say that, because I had a conversation with Gary Perry, the mechanic, and I, and I said, I hate the number, the way these numbers, not one, I want numbered with a number, and then the last two digits on the number are gonna be the year we bought the truck.
The, the other piece, um, Kevin, you talked about series wooden bird, we shared that with Bond, it should be.
The specs.
The specs, but it's, it's must go back on, correct? This is a preference.
And, and I will say that um, at least since I've gotten here, uh, we've worked very well with Monmouth, being able to, you know, horse trade things. I, I need a push down for this, the one I broke mine, he needs a knuckle, we swap stuff off, there was one day we ran out of shear pins for the trackless, he sent fifteen up and down for me, you know, so, we're doing a lot of stuff like that, this has helped also. It's no different than the training, right, when I had to set up training for the, for the chainsaw safety, I called and said, you got anything, yeah, I got one that needs it. You know, and, and we're gonna do that more and more, so, same thing with, with the police departments, the fire departments, everybody.
Well done.
And we can move on to the transfer station.
For our first. Okay, transfer station budget for two thousand twenty five, five ninety two, three ninety each day. It is presently at five seventy six, seven eighty three, which is sixty three point six percent of the budget, sixty seven percent of the fiscal year. Part of that is because of personnel changes that we've had, and part of that is because I think we're just looking at it tighter. So we're, we're doing more things in-house than maybe we used to send up. Don't get me wrong, we still have to send stuff out, you know, we can't attend to it, uh, but there, there are changes that are being done. So the proposal budget is six hundred two fifty seven, which is one point three three percent above the twenty five. And again, that's a minimal increase, and, and I'm, I'm thinking a lot of that's gonna be in the hope that we don't see big increases to our tipping fees and things like that. Well, and again, the reason that number is so low is we have restructured staff at that facility.
Um, the staff was restructured, but it's increased fifty thousand.
I think.
If you look at line above, it's going.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah. Oh, I see, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, equipment, building maintenance, there's some stuff we need to do there. Uh, increasing that, right, training, uh, those guys need some training also on different things, so. As I am able to spend more time over there, more things will change. This, this winter, I was a little pressed in getting winter done.
There needs to be a heat pump down there, too.
There is a deep pump in the, in the.
Scale, how sort of?
In the scale house and in the, I think it's in.
Office.
In the office, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed you've got that. Two thousand and six hundred, I'm looking at this, it's about fifty six thousand. Where are we heating out there, many, many people?
Um, I think it's downstairs where the um, where they pull the uh, compact is in.
Okay.
Semi.
Yeah, no, I'm just gonna, uh, that's a little large.
So SMS has the mitigations, all that could be done through, and, and again, their state federal requirements, so that's up. So I'll make sure that that is all intended to.
Was there, was there any uh, I was thinking we had increased line item for the scale?
We, we're putting money aside in the CIP to replace the vehicle.
Oh, one question I had was this purchases of tires. Where we budgeted for four thousand dollars, we're at six hundred and seventy one, but this year's budget goes up to sixty five hundred?
Yeah, you're gonna be tired from the back though, all the way around.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, also following, it's just.
We've got last year's tires on the skid steer.
Skid steer got new tires.
And then we just, well, it doesn't.
Well, I, I sure, I don't know when it got new tires, but the tires that are on there run flat, so you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, just telling me says why it doesn't show up, oh, was that capital improvements?
It was.
Okay, all right. So that is a perfect example, last year's capital improvements, this year the backhoe tires are not.
We base our answers on your questions. Subject to change.
Subject to change for that.
And again, we'll be bringing most of that um, maintenance in us.
Except for.
I'm there.
I'm all on, that's my bet. Well, Bill.
Yeah.
We know that, I'm not, we've got a working one.
Good night.
I'll give you a couple of five though.
So cemetery, and I appreciate you guys being here, so you can answer all the questions that they have. Um, I started doing, Jim, I started going to the cemetery meetings a few months back, and uh, Monmouth is very like me. And I want to thank these gentlemen for their. Get a handle, so. Uh, expenditure year to date is fifty seven point five three of a sixty seven, and uh, through the fiscal year, we're at forty one, eight eighty three, of seventy two, eight oh four. Next year, we're proposing thirty three, five hundred, um, which is a decrease. Um, and that has to do with the fact that we're bringing those positions over to Public Works, that's the difference. Right, so that's where you're seeing them. They'll still work the cemetery this summer, in fact, if I had those two positions, then.
Awesome. One question I have is that with equipment, repairs and equipment maintenance, they'll toughen three thousand to seven?
Trail, they need a trailer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you, it's under five thousand, both? Get time to ask about, is, knowing the, the other works that have been going on, uh, is any of that reflected here? Is this only, will we only see real costs, like requested, I mean, money is spent whether it's from the trust, right? So that's not.
Also, any monies that the guy that paid the truck does not spend is on maintenance? But offering to help them set little numbers up, things like that, can we not, they'll take care of that stuff, but that's different for this budget. But, but, but I think I know where you're going with that, Aaron, we need a, I think maybe more solid process as far as the cemetery committee makes recommendations, the, the town council proves it, it be reflected, and, and also how much we intend to spend out of the trust on an annual basis. Yes.
As well. We plan to bug us down.
Uh, so again, this is two seasonal positions that the budget committee, our recommendation, we increase the successive stipend five hundred dollars. Steve Kennedy, good jobs.
Yeah, no, no. Last question moves us into the area where the cemetery committee gets involved. Cemetery committee was established in two thousand nineteen to help make suggestions and offer guidance. I'm going to do with the six hundred thousand dollar plus cemetery plus part. So we have to go with our efforts for producing a plan for two thousand twenty five, um, scope of the projects, and the amount of money that we recommend, if authorized, we take it from that account in the coming fiscal year.
We just, we did get your letter.
Uh, you saw a letter, Agent Pickett, if you had a chance to review that. There's a tableau in my middle of it, there, there, there's a tableau in the middle of it that outlines the programs and their estimated costs. And uh, they include the projects that have been discussed, recommended and part of events in the past, that are not going to succeed. The reasons having to do with the government, the staff, and sometimes the hospital is able to be devoted to the tasks that we're listing here. So, for example, uh, the first project on the tableau to complete the stone repair Maple Cemetery is the final order of the entire project that was co-designed for Maple Cemetery down, down on Main Street. It is now three quarters complete, two thirds made. So, if, when this year's effort is made to complete that work, the final one third in the original contract that we've been on will be paid. But since it's still to come from the six hundred thousand dollar balance, which we maintain, we didn't want to neglect that. Yes, we prepared that, man, but it's, so it's listed again, even though, sorry to get authorized, why not reauthorize it? With your view, with all we'd like to include is this year, that. There are two uh, signs, iron signs, as you may recall, sort of span, even, Maple Cemetery apply, and another one in East Winter Cemetery. Uh, same thing, that sort of letters in the sky, but they're very archy, I guess is the word I want. But they require a certain amount of expertise to appear them and make them well. So the estimates that we have are included in this year's, they're like fifty five hundred dollars apiece. And we've been talking about that work for years, we've had various contractors, we've had various prices. It hasn't got done, we'd like to make it happen this year, we think we've got current prices, this is one of those items that when we first started talking about it, was much less costly, and as the time goes by, the prices go down. Uh, there's also a project that was new to the list this year, and that is to repair uh, the stones at the East Winter Cemetery. Each of the ones that need repair are as neglected as anything as are in Maple, but there aren't as many of them. So there must lower project cost for East Winter, and this list will be here for you, my current estimate that we have from collect monuments at twenty three thousand, four hundred dollars. Um, there's also some road repairs that we've been discussing for several years, that haven't got made for various reasons, that would be done at Glen Side Cemetery. And we were chasing, Steve Kennedy has been terrific at trying to bird dog an estimate from the contractor that he first started talking with, and for whatever reason, the guy had been slow to reply with the price. So we've estimated a certain amount of money to do that work, it's been talked about, you have, altogether, or maybe a recommendation to you, that we was up to one hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred forty two thousand dollars. Knowing that in the past, we've asked for more than we've been able to achieve, but at least you know what our goals are, and what it would involve, and what it would take from the six hundred thousand dollars to do the amount of work that we would like to accomplish. So if we can get all of these projects done, you'll know about what that's going to involve. If we get some of those projects done, then it will be less, depending upon which ones we're really involved. So that's our mission, we come to you hoping that this explanation will satisfy you, that the committee is on it, it has a, a, a plan, we, we're starting proceeding cemetery by cemetery. Uh, we started with Glen Side, you know, most neglected portion of it, it now looks pretty good. We're finishing up Maple, it looks pretty good. We intend to move our effort to East Winter Cemetery, so it looks as good as the ones we've already done. And then we hope to do the one on narrow pond road, and then the one over on that camp, it's five altogether. But um, I have to tell you the story, this whole project sort of began, as I, I sort of make the analogy, as, as if I was a homeowner. And I said, I wanna have as much money in the bank as I possibly can, so I'm gonna put all my paychecks in my savings account, and I'm gonna feel great about how much I've got in my savings account, but when the roof starts leaking, I'm not gonna fix the roof. And when the windows break, I'm not gonna fix the windows, and when the doors won't close, I'm gonna ignore that, my foundation cracks, we're not gonna fix that. But I have all the money in the gun, in the bank, right? Well, that's not the way most of us find our way to do things. We try to do what has to be done, as it needs to be done, so we're not hit with a huge thing, but we're trying to remedy some of that, because that is in effect what happened in the cemeteries, we didn't do the work. Some of those monuments in Maple, there's one that's as tall as this room, straightening that up so it doesn't look like a leaning tower pizza, you know? It's an expensive job, you don't just shovel a piece of wood under one corner, there's a little more to it, to get that thing to stand for the next hundred years. And all the others down the line, if you ride through Maple Cemetery, which we invite you to do, the, the path closest to Main Street is the path that's undone, that's what you can compare with when you emerge into the path that is done. And you see, whoa, this looks pretty good, you know, you can see the difference immediately. And that's what we're trying to do for all the cemeteries, because we feel that make a statement about Winter, and how we feel about the people that built this community before we ever got here. So that's what we're looking for, uh, we also put in a letter that uh, we've been working hard on rules. We're gonna propose to you some rules to replace the current rules, which are somewhat scattered, somewhat dated. We're very close to finishing up a set of rules we're gonna bring to you and ask you to approve as the new rules for the operation in cemeteries in Winter. And those are the kinds of things that we're trying to do, we don't get involved too much in the hands-on, day-to-day, how much does it cost, and what are they asking? That's, that's the responsibility of others on the day-to-day aspect, but we are sort of making a plan for you on, on a larger scale of what to look for in the cemeteries as we move forward. That's it?
Thank you. This question, would you like to make a comment?
Peter, thanks for coming out and giving me a presentation, this is kind of said, I've become a smoothie, listen to you guys. And uh, I think this is worth, this proposal, as you guys know, I know what I've been doing to all of these cemeteries and seeing the, there's nobody's fault, but so we should move forward, to neglect the pieces we got, and also Glen Side, the roads are really bad, they, they need taken care of, so folks who will see their loved ones, and the monuments look appropriated, I, I don't think we believe enough, I hear a lot of people in town, they took that, that Maple Cemetery sign back up, because they, it is a staple, when you, you look at it in the town, it looks sharp, and, and we want that, and you can honor the, the folks that have been here before us, right? And I mean, I think it's important, I know it seems like a big chunk, but.
And I mean, I think it's important. I know it seems like a big chunk, but, uh, I didn't want to say I'm, I'm full supportive of what needs to be done in our region. And she all the work against that, because I can't believe it, so listen to you guys.
Thank you. Kevin's been telling too. Yes, appreciate that.
Ditto.
I know, I just wanted to throw a, give a little appreciation. I mean, dedicated a lot of, um, time and efforts, uh, to the community for many years.
Well, Paul, they were here last time, they should have.
Yeah, and certainly appreciate it all here as well. Um, so I just, you know, for all disclosure, I've been, I communicated with Amy. Um, my concerns with kind of how things are right now, only in the sense that we don't have formal declarations, uh, authority, uh, for the committee. So I, I wanted to put this on a future agenda so we can kind of get squared away and in line with everything else we do with time. So, you know, we have a purchase that you, uh, kind of want to do. Um, we want to be able to give you that authority, um, in line with everything else. Um, I almost wonder if we should be looking at this board of trustees since there is the trust that they would be governing future too. But I do think that's just not immediate in the future. Um, but I do appreciate, uh, everything that you've done in the community.
The trust falls under the town, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So why, why would we need a, like a board of trustees? I mean, we are.
Well, again, they've a lot of making decisions at the moment. We have to give the authority as much as we can.
That's kind of what we're asking for. Yes. If you approve this program, that the normal flow of work with invoices and things runs through.
That's what I'm saying is why we, we don't, we need formal?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I, I do think there needs to be some guiding documents on how the fund is managed. How much we want to spend from it because, um, I mean, to be completely frank, you know, makes me a little itchy to think about spending one sixth of the corpus in one fell swoop. Uh, simply because that fund is meant to serve in perpetuity. And I know that, I know the needs are there, but I'm just talking strictly from a financial standpoint. Um, you know, you want to protect that to some extent, just to ensure it continues to grow. And this last month alone, I mean, the market's awfully turbulent and it lost eleven thousand dollars of value, you know, like that. So, you know, those are just some of the things I think to think about.
Okay.
But if you'd like to do it tonight, that's great.
I would prefer we put on a future agenda so we can probably get the town attorneys in book as well into how we can delegate our authority to the committee, which I think is going to require them being like appointed like board trustees, but I would just like some more information.
Hasn't been done in the past.
Yeah.
You don't want to.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's accurate. I mean, I mean, yeah, the, the, uh, the, one of the reasons the fund has grown so much is because it hasn't been used, uh, at all. And so I can, I'm not suggesting that. I'm not suggesting we should just like keep it just for the sake of keeping.
We've only committed to spending, uh, the interest gain, uh, that was in that part.
Well, that's, that's, uh, not an unusual approach when it comes to, to spending trust fund earnings. Well, I mean, you know, uh, Nick and I met with, uh, one of our bankers not too long ago to ask questions like this and uh, a former rule of thumb was you spend ninety percent of the interest earnings, you plow the other ten percent back into the corpus so that it continues to grow. Uh, he seemed to think that you needed to be more flexible than that, depending upon the needs that you see. And so, um,
What did the fund start out with?
Well, I think it was, I think it was disparate. Yeah, it was disparate funds that were brought together and then once they were consolidated, they just sort of sat there and just continued to grow without, without being used.
Yes, one is, you know, we've been through a very long time. Everybody sort of, it existed.
Yeah.
About that time, it was there, presented, we, it was quite a huge sum of money to continue this.
The council never gave the, that the authority to have that.
No need for us to ease.
I'll share my A machine a little bit, but when I was on the council in nineteen eighties, Marshall Hills and Irma Rice were in office at that time as town manager and town clerk. And at that time, the cemetery accounts were many and various. So that if you bought a grave site and you wanted to pay for perpetual care, you paid an extra hundred dollars. And someone went and took that hundred dollars down to the bank and they opened an account with your hundred dollars. And the interest that it earned was then spent on your lot. Four dollars and fifty cents a year, whatever it was, and both separate accounts were all maintained by the town clerk. Don't be that eerie. The world has always moved tiny amounts.
Right.
And they aggregated.
Like.
And then as time passed, lot sales were made and monies were put together with that. And so one fund was created of which the intention was to maintain all of the cemeteries. Now principally what happens is as long as after one of us passes away, our, our families will maintain our stone. But as a hundred years have passed, those families all dissipate and no one maintains the stones. And then they begin to fall into disrepair. And it falls to the town or no one to fix them up. That's where we're at right now. But to say what is the original amount is very difficult to distinguish the interest from the principal. Because if it was a hundred dollars a hundred years ago and each year it got four dollars more, what good does that do you now to know that you've got six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in the bank called the Cemetery Trust Committee? It's there because it grew over time altogether. But to try and distinguish these things, there is, you're ever going to be satisfied, I'm sure.
I think so. The intent for distinguishing it is trying to figure out what, what the principal amount would be and what.
And, and the other, what I had against is that the only reason we've got that much money is because the work was not done.
Right.
And so time passed and it kept growing, growing. And now the question is a relevant question. Do we want to maintain a certain amount forever? And that becomes the basis for whatever else we do? But do we try to recapture some of that lost ground with the money that never got spent for what it was given for? Because I can assure you, nobody ever gave money to the town of Winthrop to say, I want this to be a number in my report. They gave it to repair a stone. But that's what we'd like to do.
Because that's, that's what I was going to get at, you think Frank is saying that is. And it's not like we're going to be spending a hundred thousand dollars every year out of this. This is just how to get some of the deferred maintenance and the end. To get us back up, you guys talk about school and you talk about everything else that you want us to take the money and spend it on and get us back where we need to be. But you're afraid to spend the money on this. This, I, I just, I, I just want us to all kind of understand. We have to, even if you want to keep it down the road even further, it's deferred maintenance, deferred maintenance. And we heard that same thing, the mantra all along, all our stuff that would be deferred maintenance. Please don't oversight this where it's not really going to impact the taxpayers at all, is zero. And, and it's there to maintain the cemetery. So we spend in this one time, soon it has five hundred odd thousand dollars in there. Probably we have less to do next year and it's going to grow, the connection is going to grow in interest and then we go from there. But these, some of these things that, that we discussed on these meetings is just crazy because we, and if you go to the cemetery, you can see it. And I know a lot of you guys have been having fun with those there. So you go on there and maybe see that. But the, and, and change is, uh, the Maple was great way down the other end. I can not see it continue, but again, you know, those roads in the big lens, I just, I don't think they're horrendous.
The, the other thing I'd like to add, just because it's interesting, is that we have Revolutionary War veterans buried in Winthrop. We have Civil War veterans from the Yazoo. We've got war victims, we've got the original settlers. We've got all the names from the history books buried that you can use, look them up and people do, they want to know where is Chin? Well, I can show you the Chin. And they'll leave different one. So it, it does speak to the community. It's a community resource, but I thank you very much for what you just said.
And I agree, but we do need to spend a lot. It needs to happen. No doubt, hundred percent needs to be spent. We do need the processes because I just think of it this way, right? Say there's sixteen thousand dollars spent to a company to repair the stones. Someone comes back and says, well, what was the process that you chose to do that? Because maybe sixty thousand dollars, you know, maybe there's another company that will do it for forty thousand and they're just as good. So we have a responsibility as the council to make sure that any funds that are on the town appropriated and the processes are in place. So you can have the authority to then do that, right? So if there's no liability for questions on Europe.
Well, let me agree with you because some of those tensions are my own.
Sure.
There is a story to tell, which probably isn't the best to do it. About why collect monuments has been our single source.
Sure.
Repairment.
Yeah.
But there's a reason and there's a story. It doesn't just happen willingly.
That's right.
But whenever you want to hear it, we'll come back and tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so we don't have any action items on the agenda.
And I, we have.
Why don't we, why don't we put it on the April seventh agenda so that we can properly, uh, notice it?
That's fine. All right.
I'd just like to have these guys have the ability to get moving on these projects.
I, I understood, understood. We'll, we'll, we'll be meeting, uh, the same bat time, same bat channel next week.
So, and also have a little bit of your gentleman.
Okay.
Thank you.
But this is sort of a catchall for some of the administrative costs, these, uh, payroll costs, insurance costs, like any fiscal call. Uh, so this year the budget was, uh, smidge over two million dollars. For sixty-seven percent of the fiscal year, we are right on budget. We spent almost sixty-seven percent of that budget. Uh, which I think is good news. I think it shows we were negligent in our budgeting last year and shares of our budget administration.
Page is this, Anthony?
One page.
Is it page eighteen?
There's a split of contents at the, uh, at the front.
Oh, huge, huge. What, what page?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Administrator.
All right, sorry.
So the, so the total proposed FY twenty-six budget is, uh, not quite two, two million dollars and that's a nine percent increase. And so obviously the question is nine percent. Well, here's what's driving that change. So one of the things, anytime our wages increase, you're going to see an increase in this budget because it increases your retirement, insurance, bike test, so forth. So sixty-three thousand dollars in, there's a sixty-three thousand dollar increase in the retirement from the proposed wage increases, which we are still negotiating some of those. The new ambulance retirement plans, you guys will remember that as part of the EMS contract, we to a, a higher level retirement plan beginning in FY twenty-six. So it didn't start in twenty-five, it started in the twenty-year. We've got the two new labors. So that in, incurves some of these same retirement costs. And main current is increasing the contribution by municipalities to nine, nine percent, ten point two percent. So all of that together adds up to sixty, sixty-three thousand dollar increase. We have a thirty thousand dollar increase in our contract for consolidated IT services from here. You guys remember approving that a few months ago. That's to ensure that all of our departments are using the same IT provider, providing the same services, and we saw more cybersecurity as a result.
And you have to ask that that all the progress I can put in purposely meant to we can see you to talk about this. And the other line items, so mostly already had computer agents. They still have a, a budget number.
Yes, but that was for like particular machines, like the basic.
So that's not what I wish to say. This doesn't, this is only coming from the Vegas. This is a couple of replacements because I don't want here, it did state, did state, I didn't see for safety.
I think that, I think that was, so we have different. So actually, the Sierra contract would be under contract, so. Uh, again, with the higher wages that we're negotiating right now, you're going to see twenty-two thousand dollars more in your five thousand.
Anthony, where are the salary lines in these?
There are no salary lines in this budget.
This is the, this is your.
Your nineteen, page nineteen.
Yes. Right.
So there, there are no salaries in this budget.
This is like the.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, central, okay. Well, okay, go ahead. I have a question though. Go ahead.
You want to go ahead and ask your question?
Yep. Um, are we paying PFMLA? Are we paying the employees por- portion as well?
No, just leaving that cost.
We're splitting the cost? Okay. All right.
So, uh, fifteen thousand dollars more in, uh, payments that are in lieu of health insurance payments. That's good. So what that means is right now we currently pay someone who doesn't take our insurance five thousand dollars, which is a whole lot less than the cost of an insurance package. But they have approved us that they're, that they have insurance elsewhere, typically on a spouse's, uh, insurance. So, so even though we're going to be spending more on that item, we'll be saving on that insurance line item. Uh, eleven thousand dollars more for liability insurance per MMA. And Nick has done a really good job of just checking with them from time to time about our insurance cost. And we'll continue to do that as we near the end of, of, of approving this budget. And then I think we mentioned the last time that we met, we took, we've taken all of our postage line items from all of the town office budgets and consolidated the, those into one line item. It just makes it cleaner to administer. So, so it looks like it's a big increase in this budget. In, in actuality, it's just taking all the previous budgets and putting it in. And we may need to update this once we have agreed upon, it's like the bargaining agreement.
Anthony, on page twenty-one, um, I see a cost for a regional harbor master. I don't think we call authorizing anything like that.
That or training.
Training for who?
For Mark.
For Mark?
Yes. In fact, he, he just completed his training this year.
Going through this, this is just more of a, maybe help me. I didn't see anything for us using for electric or oil expenses in this line item in this building.
Because we don't pay those costs.
I, I think it's not, do we have to give it back to the store?
So, uh, so at one point I proposed to the superintendent that they should keep paying a portion of the finance director's, uh, salary. And she said, well, at that point, we would have to talk to you about paying for utilities and so forth. And I said, you know what? Let's just leave this.
Steve, I just didn't see it yet. I want to do this explanation. I just want something to explain.
Yeah, I think, I think we're getting a pretty good deal out of that.
So Anthony, that letter we got a while back, about the twelve thousand dollars for straightening out the, uh, town website and the ordinances and everything?
The codification.
Yeah, that's not in this budget, is it?
No, it's not because, because those, those funds will be spent this year, not next year.
Well, I didn't think that we had proved that yet.
Was it here? It was, it was in the FY twenty-five budget.
That's.
So we're going to go ahead and spend that?
Yes, I would like to spend that. I, I sent it up to the council. I only heard from one council member. So I'm assuming that the council loves.
What was it?
Well, I probably shouldn't make that assumption.
Well, all, Andy, all I can do is send information to the council, ask you to send any feedback. They have feedback. If I don't hear anything. I said, and in fact, the email said, if I don't hear anything, I'm going to assume.
Position, but I just.
You folks are supporting, and I only heard from one council.
Mike, what's the subject?
Codification. So, uh,
The subject is that twelve thousand dollars and for over fifteen hundred dollars a year for consolidating the town website and digitizing the ordinances. So we can't pour tissues for the teachers, but we can afford to do that.
So first of all, so it's in the, it's in the current years.
I'm going to explain.
Yes, it's in the current years, planning budget. And we've been working with some vendors in order to codify, send you guys some examples from a few other communities about what that is about. Winslow was one of them.
Oh, he's a true.
And, uh, and see any feedback instead of, if I don't hear from you guys, you know, I'm going to assume that, that you're good with us going ahead and proceeding with this project.
Already budgeted.
I heard from.
That's how we do business in Winthrop. The town actually just throws an idea out and if we don't respond, you go ahead.
Andy, it was budgeted in this year's budget. The project was budgeted. So the council approved the.
Already budgeted. I didn't vote for it, but you probably did.
But you did.
Budget.
That's it.
Any questions?
Uh, there was one, sorry. There was one question, and I know we talked about it last time we met, like ambulance business.
Oh, well, how long? I'll do my best.
We talked about it, and I didn't, I didn't last time. My question to you, what are you looking for is to go on with that new claimant that Ian presented to the five dollar increase to reduce the overtime? And I noticed that it really didn't, was that the, you knew that last year or is that the?
Oh, that's this year.
Because some of the overdone is pretty risky. I had this one again. We thought we didn't forget that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't like, ah.
But we can take that.
You know, we're going to put that plan into place.
We have to put it in place.
And we had discussed whether Labor Day or all the way through on.
Correct.
Okay.
Didn't that save, didn't that help save money?
We've done it.
That's most. We start this, uh, June.
Memorial Day.
More of that. It didn't be July through.
Memorial Day.
To Labor Day. Labor. You should say something, right?
Yes.
But the line that I see.
Okay, so, so does our fiscal year begin?
July first.
Okay.
So July first to Memorial to Labor Day.
Yes.
There ought to be some sort of saving.
You're saying about budgeting.
No, but what I'm saying is, yes, there'll be a savings during those three months of the fiscal year. But the other nine months of the fiscal year, we won't be offering the program. So I think what Bastel did was he looked at what the overtime was this year and tried to project that minus the cost or a reduction in the cost for those three months.
In other words, you're saying it would have been a hundred and twenty percent instead of a hundred and five?
May, maybe.
Is it still a reduction then at all?
Well, that's right.
No, it's a certain five percent increase. But what was last year? So, so it goes to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and five. Still the D's, you know, I just thought of those.
Is it twenty twenty-five?
So we can take our product prices last year, they give it.
Pretty much. Hundred eighteen, forty-five, hundred eighteen. Their initial is from ninety-two.
So what's that?
That's it's a hundred and five, I said. Uh, one hundred and six. From what we budgeted in twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-six.
Okay, but, but I would suggest to you, the important number is not the budgeted number, it's the year to date now. So when you look at, when you look at the paramedic OT budget, which was, um, it was Bastel's predecessor who, who drafted this budget. Budgeted forty-five, even though we spent ninety-four the, the previous year, in year to date, we're at a hundred and eighteen.
It's crazy.
So, so what I would suggest is don't look at the budgeted number, look at the year to date. Yeah, look at the actions. Same, same thing, same thing with, uh, with the EMT overtime. We budgeted thirty-eight, even though we spent eighty-two the year before. We, uh, we've spent seventy-five thousand dollars to date. And so what he, what he budgeted is equivalent to two thirds of what we spent this year. So, so, so this is, this is a budget where we did not do a good job.
See if it breaks.
Yes, sir.
And budget the right.
That's our data, or that's one of us. It's not here today. To get an answer, I'm sure you would want to look at the difference of what we've spent over.
Right.
In those two years.
With the increase of the weekend paying versus what we pay out.
It may not work. I think it's something worth.
Well, I don't, don't try something.
We'll, we'll have some.
Yeah.
Questions from the council?
Need to text our attorney.
Let's get onto executive sessions. I move that we go on to executive session, uh, one MRSA section four oh five sixty labor negotiations. Uh, one MRSA section four oh five six A personnel and one MRSA section four oh five six C acquisition of real property or economic development.
Okay.